Roll call please.
Mr. Asset.
Here.
Mr. Bain.
Yeah.
Mr. Beshear.
Here.
Mrs. Broadwater.
Here.
Mr. Delros.
Here.
Mr. Dorsey. Mr. Harvey.
Here.
Mrs. Kaminski.
Yeah.
Mrs. Terabeck.
Here.
Stand for the pledge of allegiance, please. Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I have two superintendents remarks.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a few issues to discuss with the public. I don't know if you remember, but I made an announcement that our students in the entrepreneurial program had won the regional awards in Pittsburgh at the end of last year. We applied again to the U.S. Commerce Association for their project that they completed this year, and they again are a winner of the U.S. Commerce Association Best of Brownsville Award, as they call it. It's based on your community. I don't know if Mr. McManus is in the audience. Do we have any students, Mr. McManus, today?
Uh, no. Actually, Lexi Rolfe is speaking at a Rotary.
Okay.
And the other young lady took her today, but she said she was gonna talk to her mom to try to get here.
Well, I'd like for you to come up and give you this award in honor of our students. For those of you who don't know, Mr. McManus is taking over the entrepreneurial program this year. He's been involved in it in years past, so please, tomorrow we'll get this on our television station for our students. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And send this to the students for us tomorrow.
Will do. Thank you.
Good job. Thanks. We also, in honor of this, the Board of Directors who supports the program, received the award as well. So, Mr. President, this is our second year in a row, so congratulations and thank you to the Board for the support of the entrepreneurial program. This will be just very important. Second, I received information that only 30 percent of the people or organizations, clubs, et cetera, who apply for this, only 30 percent may achieve a two-time. A few other things, if you don't mind. The Brownsbury School District received an environmental science grant for the high school, middle school, elementary science teachers. The total is a $7,500 grant, and it will be to study environmental issues as part of their curriculum, and it will take place in Luzern Park. And we've had that in the past, and I believe that's a spring program, but we received notification of that today. So, congratulations to the staff. We've also received a $5,000 state grant for a state comprehension guidance plan. Pennsylvania Department of Education has been focusing on the counseling curriculum in the last few years, and most of the schools in the district or in the county are part of this. We received our grant today, and it will be focusing on career development and success. We were commended by the state for the development of the student portfolio at the high school level. A lot of what we do in that portfolio parallels what the state has been mandated, so we've been doing this for a couple of years. So, congratulations to our guidance staff for their time and efforts. We also received a $2,500 grant from the Westmoreland Fayette United Way. The purpose of this is to work with pre-K students and preparing them in the future to enter our district in the kindergarten level. And congratulations to our yearbook sponsor and staff. They've been recognized by the Balfour Yearbook Incorporated. Uh, Incorporated. I'm gonna slow down. Our yearbook sponsor staff have been recognized by the Balfour Yearbook Company for their Yearbook Excellence Award. It is a certificate of recognition that is for the quality of the overall development and final product of the yearbook, which includes excellence in journalistic contributions. So, congratulations to Mrs. Bullish. I don't know if she's here this evening. No, but congratulations. Her and her staff do a very good job. And her staff is made up of several students, so congratulations to them. And today I received word that the high school science department received a $5,400 grant from the Chevron Corporation to develop a model of a Marcellus shale gas well and to study the impact it has in the sciences as well as on the environment. So, congratulations to Mrs. Bach. She's instrumental in that. I don't know if she's here this evening, but congratulations to Mrs. Bach and the rest of the science department. And that's all I have.
Okay, I agree. Public remarks on agenda items only. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward, state your name, nature of business. Seeing no one. Item four, adoption of agenda and related material for cooperation in events. Motion by Director Terabeckia, second by Director Asset. Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item five, approval of June 21st, 2012, July 31st, 2012, and August 16th, 2012 board minutes. Motion by Director Terabeckia.
Second.
Second by Director Kaminski. Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item six, Mr. Bain, board treasurer.
I would like to approve the August 2012 general fund cafeteria fund, Title I, Title II, 1A, 2D, treasure, financial reports.
I have a motion by Director Bain, second by Director Terabeckia. Questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Asset.
Yes.
Mr. Bain.
Yes.
Mr. Beshear.
Yes.
Mrs. Broadwater.
Yes.
Mr. Delros.
Yes.
Mr. Harvey.
Yes.
Mrs. Kaminski.
Yes.
Mrs. Terabeckia.
Yes. Item seven, approval of the following funds you see before you. Motion by Director Bain.
Second.
Second by Director Terabeckia. Questions? Roll call, please.
Now, Mrs. Terabeckia.
Yes.
Mrs. Kaminski.
Yes.
Mr. Harvey.
Yes.
Mr. Delros.
Yes.
Mrs. Broadwater.
Yes.
Mr. Beshear.
Yes.
Mr. Bain.
Yes.
Mr. Asset.
Yes.
Mr. Bain.
Yes.
Mr. Beshear.
Yes.
Mrs. Broadwater.
Yes.
Mr. Delros.
Yes.
Mr. Harvey.
Yes.
Mrs. Kaminski.
Yes.
Mrs. Terabeckia.
Yes.
All this review. Director Terabeckia.
Consider a motion to approve the attached policy number 800.2 for electronic records and signatures.
Second. Motion by Director Terabeckia, second by Director Asset. Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Personnel. Director Delros.
Item A, I move to approve the attached list of intermittent unit one emergency substitutes.
Second.
Motion by Director Terabeckia, second by Mr. Asset. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Personnel. Director Delros.
Item B, I move to add the following names to the professional substitute list. Michael Ballon, Sharon Ferro, Nicole Kenny, Danielle Reed, and Mika Short.
Motion by Director Terabeckia, second by Director Asset. Questions?
Everything in order?
Yes, ma'am.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Item C, I move to add Sherry Sterbutsel and Cynthia Walters professional substitute.
Motion by Director Delros, second by Director Terabeckia. Questions?
Any questions?
Yes, ma'am.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Item C, I move to add Sherri Sterbutsel and Cynthia Walters professional substitute.
Motion by Director Delros, second by Director Terabeckia. Questions?
Any questions?
Yes, ma'am.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Item D, I move to accept the attached reservation of Renee Sanders, teacher's aide effective on August 27th, 2012.
Motion by Director Delros, second by Director Terabeckia. Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Item E, I move to approve the attached 2012-2013 list of middle school and high school extracurricular staff and department heads.
Motion by Director Delros, second by Director Terabeckia. Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Item F, I move to hire Dr. Montagna as school physician for the 2012-2013 school year with compensation set at $3.50 per student examination.
Motion by Director Delros, second by Director Terabeckia. Questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Beshear.
Yes.
Mr. Asset.
Yes.
Mrs. Broadwater.
Yes.
Mr. Delros.
Yes.
Mr. Harvey.
Yes.
Mrs. Kaminski.
Yes.
Mrs. Terabeckia.
Yes.
Item G, I move to hire Roland Patton, who is in the deal for school dental services for the 2012-2013 school year to be compensated at the rate at $2 per student examination.
Motion by Director Delros, second by Director Terabeckia. Questions?
Question. I know that we don't pay Dr. Furman, but is he on there?
I apologize. He is to be on there, but he was appointed at the beginning of the season. Yes, ma'am.
So, he's on there?
He should be. I apologize. He should've been on there, but...
Let you see.
Well, he's on there under athletic.
Is he?
Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Asset.
Yes.
Mr. Bain.
Yes.
Mr. Beshear.
Yes.
Mrs. Broadwater.
Yes.
Mr. Delros.
Yes.
Mr. Harvey.
Yes.
Mrs. Kaminski.
Yes.
Mrs. Terabeckia.
Yes.
Item A, I move to hire Bernadette Newton, a four-time, three-hour cafeteria coordinator assigned to Brownsbury Middle School, salary to be consistent with the district SEIU contract effective September 21st, 2012.
Motion by Director Delros, second by Director Broadwater. Questions? Go ahead.
I want to take the time to show my, share my appreciation for Mrs. Beth Sutton, the district since 2008, never refused to work, and I think it's an honor to give her my yes vote.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Asset.
Yes.
Mr. Bain.
Yes.
Mr. Beshear.
Yes.
Mrs. Broadwater.
Yes.
Mr. Delros.
Yes.
Mr. Harvey.
Yes.
Mrs. Kaminski.
Yes.
Mrs. Terabeckia.
Yes.
Item I, I consider a motion to approve the settlement of the Thomas Hissero versus Brownsbury School District case for the sum of $16,000 and authorize the president and secretary to sign the settlement agreement in review.
Motion by Director Delros, second by Director Bain. Questions?
Question. My bet's gonna be no on this. I tariff people, pay people off in this district for absolutely nothing, so my bet will be no.
My vote would be no, however, I don't shoot, I don't want to shoot the man out of $160,000, and that's what we're handing if we keep doing that. So, my vote will be yes.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Asset.
No.
Mr. Bain.
Pass.
Mr. Beshear.
Pass.
Mrs. Broadwater.
Yes.
Mr. Delros.
No.
Mr. Harvey.
No.
Mrs. Kaminski.
Yes.
Mrs. Terabeckia.
I have to move on. Yes.
Back to Mr. Bain.
No.
And Mr. Beshear.
No.
And where do we go now? Back to the table to, for another... We pay our solicitor, no, we pay you plus, like I said, this is what he ended up costing us, $100,000, if we continue. A superintendent signed off on it. There's nothing we can change. He, the man is right in every way, every way, he's right.
We've been paying him for five years.
I know that. Oh, I know that he ended up coming against it, but when you have a superintendent that signed off on him, what do you do?
I understand that, but I have better now.
I agree with Mrs. Broadwater, we're gonna end up paying $200,000 for taxpayers' money. Our hands are tied.
We're in a no-win situation. Our solicitor told us we cannot win. We cannot win. And I'd rather settle it now, before we get to that, because Brownsville cares for that.
Would this item be put back on the agenda for next month immediately?
It can be.
I'm just asking.
Well, I'd like to see it back on there.
It can be, but we don't know where the other party's gonna go with it now.
Right, they're gonna go forward. It's gonna be more money than this.
Forward, our hands are tied.
Right. We cannot do anything about it. You cannot win.
We'll find out.
Can we bring it up more time and see? Tonight?
Tonight?
Right now. I make a motion that we pay this $16,000 to...
I second.
There's a motion and a second.
To reconsider the last vote.
Make a motion to reconsider.
Okay, make a motion to re... Okay, I'll make that motion.
I second.
I have a motion, Liza, to reconsider the last vote by Director Broadwater, second by Director Terabeckia, to reconsider the last vote.
It's something that's nearby. Sorry, you're turning over. It'd be just a motion to reconsider. I have a personal, personal policy.
I made it. She's second.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Terabeckia.
Ready?
Yes. Mrs. Kaminski.
No.
Mr. Harvey.
No.
Mr. Delros.
No.
Mrs. Broadwater.
Yes.
Mr. Beshear.
No.
Mr. Bain.
I will stand.
And Mr. Asset.
No.
Motion.
Finance Director Bain.
I moved on to the request from Mrs. Shirley Yachtabet, who is a tax collector, to refund school taxes in the amount of $25.01 on parcel 30-21-0001 due to a reduction of the property assessment for Bay County Assessment Office.
I have a motion by Director Bain, second by Director Terabeckia. Questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Asset.
Yes.
Mr. Bain.
Yes.
Mr. Beshear.
Yes.
Mr. Broadwater.
Yes.
Mr. Delros.
Yes.
Mr. Harvey.
Yes.
Mrs. Kaminski.
Yes.
Mrs. Terabeckia.
Consider a motion to approve the attached UTMC work partnership agreement.
Motion by Director Bain, second by Director Terabeckia. Questions?
Has everybody opened this agreement?
Yes.
You can see workers' comp.
Right. Okay, you did. Okay.
Are you recommending the passage?
Yes.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye.
Kill our workers' comp carrier.
Oh, Newman, okay. Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Consider a motion to purchase the Heartland Tomilex point of sale payment software for district-wide cafeteria use at a cost of $9,114 to be paid with capital reserve funds.
Motion by Director Bain, second by Director Kaminski. Questions?
Just one confirmation. This is a one-time initial fee?
Yeah.
And then every year after, boom, record is $2100?
Yes, sir. $2200.
It has a maintenance fee.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Terabeckia.
Yes.
Mrs. Kaminski.
Yes.
Mr. Harvey.
Yes.
Mr. Delros.
Yes.
Mrs. Broadwater.
Yes.
Mr. Beshear.
Yes.
Mr. Bain.
Yes.
Mr. Asset.
Yes. Athletic Director Asset.
Item A, consider a motion to approve the attached application agreement with California versus Pennsylvania for undergraduate athletic training education program.
Motion by Director Asset.
Record.
Second by Director Terabeckia. Questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Item B, consider a motion to hire Greg Gall, basketball coach, 2012-2013 season. Compensation set at $1,200.
Motion by Director Asset, second by Director Terabeckia. Questions?
He's already got it, correct? Right.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Asset.
Yes.
Mr. Bain.
Yes.
Mr. Beshear.
Yes.
Mrs. Broadwater.
Yes.
Mr. Delros.
Yes.
Mr. Harvey.
Yes.
Mrs. Kaminski.
Yes.
Mrs. Terabeckia.
Yes. Item C, consider a motion to hire Brian Addy, assistant boys' basketball coach. Compensation set at $2,400.
Motion by Director Asset, second by Director Terabeckia. Questions? Roll call.
Mrs. Terabeckia.
Yes.
Mrs. Kaminski.
Yes.
Mr. Harvey.
Yes.
Mrs. Delros.
Yes.
Mrs. Broadwater.
Yes.
Mr. Beshear.
Yes.
Mr. Bain.
Yes.
Mr. Asset.
Yes.
Mr. Bain.
Yes.
Mr. Beshear.
Yes.
Mrs. Broadwater.
Yes.
Mr. Delros.
Yes.
Mr. Harvey.
Yes.
Mrs. Kaminski.
Yes.
Mrs. Terabeckia.
Item E, consider a motion to hire Christine Underritini, assistant girls' basketball coach. Conversation set at $2,400.
Motion by Director Asset, second by Director Terabeckia. Questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Terabeckia.
Yes.
Mrs. Kaminski.
Yes.
Mr. Harvey.
Yes.
Mr. Delros.
Yes.
Mrs. Broadwater.
Yes.
Mr. Beshear.
Yes.
Mr. Bain.
Yes.
Mr. Asset.
Yes. Item F, consider a motion to hire Patty Colombian, assistant girls' basketball coach. Conversation set at $1,200.
Motion by Director Asset, second by Director Terabeckia. Questions?
Question. I just want to say I had her basketball team does very well, because I'm sure they love them.
How big is yours? Okay. Roll call.
Mr. Asset.
Yes.
Mr. Bain.
Yes.
Mr. Beshear.
Yes.
Mrs. Broadwater.
Yes.
Mr. Delros.
Yes.
Mr. Harvey.
Yes.
Mrs. Kaminski.
Yes.
Mrs. Terabeckia.
Item G, consider a motion to make David Purloin as volunteer team physician for the football team 2012-2013 school year. Second, motion by Director Asset, second by Director Terabeckia. Questions?
Comment? I think, I think we should be honored, and I'd like to express my thanks to Mr. Purloin being a volunteer physician, you know, with his license online. I take it as an honor for our district, and I'd like to thank him for that.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Buildings and grounds, Director Harvey.
Okay, for our first item here, let it open up for discussion first. This is a motion to award bids for paving the parking lot driveways in Cox Donahue and the high school. We could take the lowest bid for all, which would be Ellis asphalt paving. That would be the front and back of Cox Donahue and the high school. Or we were just doing the front of Cox Donahue, it would be L Bron.
I'd like to make a motion to go to executive session. This was my first time.
I have a motion by Director Bain, second by Director Asset for executive session.
It's not an executive session.
Why can't we do it in public?
There's not... She has to be personnel, legal, child.
You're talking about this item?
Mr. Bain.
It's this item.
Just this item on there?
That's the only thing I have to talk about. I think we want to talk about...
No, you can't. Not, it's not, it's not attractive.
Okay.
Continue, Mr. Harvey, for this item.
Again, if we want to do all the paving, that would be the front, the back, and the high school. The low bid is the Ellis asphalt paving, and that is my recommendation. However, if we wanted to just do the front of Cox Donahue, L Bron is the low bid at $75,000.
The high school, just so you know, the two visits Cox will be the whole parking lot, front, back, and all driveways. The high school, there are some spider cracks up here to start, and they're gonna cut them out, mill, and patch it, so we don't have to catch it before the year works.
I certainly don't agree that the asphalt work is needed, but if we're in the midst of renovating or building, we're gonna be wasting money there.
That can be a part of the project.
I mean, I need that, there's no question, but if we're only doing three locations, if, in this case, Cox Donahue, then this would be something that would be already complete.
And we, no, right, we have no plan of shutting Cox Donahue down, which one is... Right. Been discussed, but this is a project that's gonna happen no matter what.
Exactly. So, either do this or redo.
The price of fuel, the way the price is moving right now, it's gonna be the cheapest thing to do it as long as...
I agree. So, Director Harvey, you have, you recommend the low bid. I'm recommending doing all the work at the lowest bid, which is number two on this list, Ellis asphalt.
We're gonna pay it up.
Have the project, destruction.
If this money will come out of the capital improvement fund.
Capital project. Capital project is not a capital...
And when would they proceed? Do they say? I'm sorry, I wasn't... They said this year?
Yeah, it'll be this, this... Mr. Harvey, this paving season, right?
If, they would like to do it this fall, but the plant closes in November, so if they can't, they don't, they don't know, because it'll have to be done on Saturday, so they can't confirm if it will be done this fall because of logistics with the tar plants, I mean, with the asphalt plants.
If the board approves it...
If they want to do it on Saturday is when they're gonna do it.
If the board approves it, we'll notify them tomorrow, and then we can notify the board of a tentative date for that.
Just one other question, Mr. Harvey. Does that include painting the lines?
Yes. All many cap lines.
And so we have, you have a motion?
We don't want to mind people up to work for a year ahead. We need it done.
No, I agree. It's, I'm just saying what they say, as long as the plants are open on Saturday and if they're, as long, as long as they're, they'll do it if the plants are open, they'll do it. It's not a fault.
Okay, so you have a motion by Director Harvey.
So, a motion then would read, I move to award the bids that were open on September 19, 2012, for paving parking lot and driveways at Cox Donahue, Almond Tree School, and the high school, to Ellis asphalt paving for a total of $143,915.
I second that. I have a motion by Director Harvey for Ellis asphalt, lowest bidder, second by Director Bain. Questions? Roll call.
Mr. Asset.
Yes.
Mr. Bain.
Yes.
Mr. Beshear.
Yes.
Mrs. Broadwater.
Yes.
Mr. Delros.
Yes.
Mr. Harvey.
Yes.
Mrs. Kaminski.
Yes.
Mrs. Terabeckia.
Yes.
In the following motions, I just want, I want the board to understand what these motions entail and what our options are in regards to voting on this. So, for example, in the first item, also, item B here, the renovation of Cox Donahue should be accommodated, 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 I'm sorry, grades three, four, and five, and in motion C should be one, two, and three, or K to two, I'm sorry.
Why would you do that? What's the reason?
For the plan.
K1 and K2, we agreed it was gonna be a Cox, and three, four, and five would be a Ford. We agreed to a Monday.
No, no, we, what, that's not what we agreed to build. The phased approach would be, you have your students in K through two at Cox Donahue currently, and you would renovate Hiller free of the students at Central and Cox Donahue. Once the renovations are complete at Hiller, you would move the K to two students to that facility, and then you would renovate Cox Donahue, again, free of any students, the students with Dendi and Hiller and Central. Once the renovations are completed at Cox Donahue, you move the students from their three to five from Central to Cox Donahue.
Well, if you look at Cox Donahue, I know Hiller only has one kindergarten road. Cox Donahue has only, and the bathrooms and everything, the facilities there, I don't know how much renovation you'd have to do there. Maybe move the lower ones there and put the older ones at Hiller, because like I said, there's only one kindergarten road at Hiller School. We want to do less renovation, least as we can.
I understand that. Hiller, obviously with the size, is gonna have to take on a considerable renovation. In that considerable renovation will be, will accommodate the kindergarten students. The reasoning, again, behind this transition is that we can do renovations free of disruption to the students, no... The reasoning, again, behind this transition is that we could do renovations free of disruption to the students. No renovations will hurt.
Oh, we know that, we said that that night.
So the only
So regardless where we put the, uh, grade, I feel that Hiller should accommodate the three, four, and five in leave Cox Donahue K one, two. Yes.
But, but my point being is, is once the renovations are done at, at Hiller, if you, if you move the three, four, and five students from Central to Hiller, and then you, you're still gonna have students in Cox Donahue when you do those renovations. That's the basis behind doing it.
Not necessarily if it's one exciting, uh, one.
So John, you're saying two years are important to be invested in what is said, it's gonna have to be moving around for the next two or three years.
It would be one move per grade, per year, which the majority of our students do regardless. But if you're moving from, from two to three, you're moving to a different school. If you're moving from five to six, you're moving to a different school.
Well, here's my question. Why are each one of these a separate motion? Why isn't it one motion to do Hiller, to do Cox, and I guess you're gonna do a stadium? Why are they three different motions?
Uh, I, I question that as well. I, I think that could've been
This, this solicitor recommended we do it this way.
Yes.
But what if one flies and one doesn't?
Well, that, that was the point that I wanted to get to. Basically, what I want to say is I outlined options behind this here. So if you looked at option A, which is the Hiller K two and Cox Donahue three, five, that would be voting on motions B and C. Now again, that doesn't leave anything for, uh, a new statement. A proposal would be that you take proceeds from the school sales and you apply it to the upgrade at Redstone Field.
Oh, you want to, you want to sink another million dollars in that stuff?
You know, it changed everything since money. And I want to know, wait, where did you have your project meeting to do it, Mr. Chairman?
There was no project meeting.
Okay, I'm gonna tell you, John, and here's, you gotta get straightened up because nobody's going to straighten you out. But buddy, you better read your code real quick. You can never act in the capacity as one. And you've been doing that for five and a half years. And I'm fed up with you. I want to know about the conference call that you had with the architect yesterday. I wasn't on your money.
Mrs. Broadwater, please read the code because as chairman of the Building and Grounds Committee, I can contact the appropriate individuals to gather information. Just like you can contact anyone and gather information and bring it to this board is exactly what I did.
You're very wrong.
I am not.
You can never act in a capacity as one and then
I did not act in a capacity as one. I acted in a, in a mode of gathering information and bringing it back to this board to make an educated
Do you not have a panel with you? Who are they? You're the chairman and you have three other people. Why couldn't you include everyone at the phone call?
They, that was, that was offered.
Oh, you called everyone?
I didn't call them, it was offered from the administration.
Is that right?
No, I, I did not call anyone else.
You didn't call anyone else, right, but he did it on his own.
Regardless.
No, regardless, you're not lying.
I did not call.
Mrs. Broadwater, you can, you can question my opinion. You can question, you can challenge my views, but do not ever question my integrity.
I, I know, that's what I'm questioning right now.
Well
Because this is a joke to leave this entire board out and you come up with all the
I don't want to make this a personal
I'm doing this, no. Rocky, you know I'm right.
I'm not saying anyone's right, I'm saying let's not make this a personal conflict.
Okay, I don't want to make it personal.
I have a question, Mr. Gilaudier.
You've been doing this for five and a half years, giving us slides, giving us
Exactly, so that this board can make an educated and, and, an educated constructive decision. I am not forcing anything on this board.
Why did you save your money and act like you were all set?
Would you allow me to answer? On Monday, my discussion, and, and the feeling was that we could do the Hiller renovation at $7 million. We could do the Cox Donahue renovation at $3 million and have $2 million left for a stadium. After
You don't need $7 million at Hiller. You already have them, you're in the middle.
Again.
Again.
Back, that, that is my point to bring in the associates from Kimball. They are the experts, the architects, who said, you're right, we don't need $7 million to renovate Hiller. We need $9 million.
Well, did Kimball give you the idea that we should have a kindergarten school up here? Give that, through that idea?
That is another option, based from
For what?
From expert opinion, they're saying this is another option that, that the board can consider. Kimball and Associates, gentlemen.
They said that?
Yes.
Who asked us for their opinion? Did you?
Yes.
Oh, you did, okay.
Yes, the chairman of the Building and Grounds.
He did.
Right.
Yeah, right.
Okay.
But we're not making a private kindergarten for nobody, for no teachers, nobody, buddy?
Mike, a question. Mike, just for my information, your board's information. $12 million is available, correct?
There, there should be $12 million available by refinancing the 2005 issue.
And my question is, of that $12 million, that is no tax increase to the residents of this district. Should we spend that $12 million or we refinance those bonds?
When we refinance, there will be no tax increase for that. Bond payment that we currently pay will remain the same through the life of
The bond payment will remain the same. My question is, should this, this project go over $12 million, what happens?
Wait a minute, no, no, I'm gonna go there, Rocky, because he said
No, I just want to know
No, he said we need dicks. No, he said we need dicks at $12 million and they could not
If it's not enough money
Even if there's a change order coming, that's John said.
You could make a fixed price contract or time and material contract.
And if a change order comes here, what do we do?
That is on the contract, because you contracted, that, that is the basis of a fixed price contract.
I'm, I'm certainly concerned with change order, but my point is, I don't know the $12 million to do that project. I, I'd certainly rather see a new building renovated, but, um, my point is and, and don't get me wrong, I know everybody did a lot of work, you guys did a lot of work with this. To me, Cox Donahue's really congested, Central was far beyond its life. And, and listen, I'm from Redstone, but if you could build a building right here, I don't have a problem right out front, down in that valley. But if you're gonna do it, we need to do it right with the stadium and turf and a new elementary complex, state of the art, everything. So I'm asking $12 million is not enough money. I know we don't ask, so I'm asking him. So I'm not gonna be for a tax increase that's gonna strap the residents.
You asked what's going on?
So there's gotta be some other plan somewhere.
Mr. President, that's, that may
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
That is the basis for the, for what we have behind. So if you're looking at option A, which is Hiller K two, Cox Donahue three, and five, it's $9 million for Hiller, it's $3 million for Cox Donahue, that's your $12 million. With that option, there's nothing for a new stadium.
Option B, Cox Donahue, Central, and a new stadium. Cox Donahue, again, you're $3 million. Central, $5 million, new stadium, $4 million. Option C is what is Broadwater referring to is the Hiller is a, a K, um, building. You have Cox Donahue, one to five, at $9 million. You have the new stadium at $3 million. Hiller, you would have to use proceeds potentially from the school sale to do what minimal renovations you need to do to make that a kindergarten facility. And D is the Hiller K two and a new stadium. And again, you do nothing with Cox Donahue other than proceeds from a different one, in this case proceeds from a sale to school to do whatever, again, whatever minimal
So option three, C, let's just say it was Cox Donahue, one through five. And I, forgive me for not doing my homework, is that building built up? Or are we, or are we building out? Because there's not a lot of room there. Are we putting a second floor on or is it? Yeah, I hate to ask that question.
The plans right now, we need to expand, but the architects are here, they can basically, once you get into the do, design phase, phase, you can make that decision based on square footage and
One more question, I don't mean to drag this on. The capacity, would it, is it just at the borderline to where we could not, or could accept more students? Because we are, our enrollment is creeping a little bit. So we are at the borderline to where if we would
Mr. Bashir?
If we would spend the $12 million and build it and add on to these two buildings.
Mr. Bashir, this is one of the
They would be a capacity.
I've been looking, I've been looking at these studies that would be given and everything, and I'm honest kids, what they project us for kids, and their projections ain't quite what we have. And the new building isn't big enough to supply for a new complex. So obviously, it's gonna cost more because we're gonna have to put a couple more classrooms on it because you can't build a school for 775 if there's 778 kids. Because we still have classrooms, no matter what we're doing. If we do this K through five, the Cox Donahue, I'm reading in another study, that's why I said we have so many different studies, that we're 255 short on classroom size there. I mean, do we have anything that's clear and precise?
Mr. Bain, I know the reason for the study, for many studies, we're trying to go the best cost-effective way to, to give our students the best facility. I believe that those two buildings are forty-some years old, you know what's happening. They're slowly crumbling, fifty years old.
But why would you build a kindergarten center, put all that money just for a kindergarten building? When Union Town put hundreds of thousands of dollars into a kindergarten center and now they are closing it down? And all that money
The nine of us sitting here have a lot of power to make decisions. These are not sometimes favorable decisions, but I know that this area is very strapped, you can't $12 million is fine, Mike, I know that, uh, that's no tax increase, we refinance the bond. They, when would they expire? 2045, I'll be dead, everybody's gonna be about dead. So somebody's gonna pay for that, it's like somebody paid for everybody's education here when they went to school. We didn't think about that. But that's not barring any money other than refinancing the bond for $12 million. Wouldn't, wouldn't it be more comfortable where we're getting the money out of? But $15 million might be a nice project. $15 to $18 million.
You have to borrow
But the question is, where's it coming from?
You'd have to borrow more money, you'd have to raise taxes.
We can't do that, correct? We, we can't borrow a single dime. So now, that's why there's so many studies.
That's why there's
Let me, let me ask this question. What year was this high school built? It's renovated in 2000.
1967.
I want to know what year it was built.
1967.
Fifty years ago, here we go, this is our new, this is our new renovated building, okay? I got a brand new one right next door. Right next door, built in 2000, what? And the roofs are leaking on it, so it ain't the ages, it's our problems.
That's right, Jeff, I applaud you on that.
Let's, let's think about that a second. This, this is an old building right here that was renovated, I think it's a pretty darn nice school. Very impressive when you come up that driveway and look down here and see this new school.
But Jeff, do you want to put a band-aid on the situation?
Is it, would you consider this school as a band-aid?
No, it's a beautiful school.
But it costs $23 million.
Our kids are in an air-conditioned building?
Yeah, but that's with a whole new school on it.
It's leaking, it's leaking. Oh, I know, but
And nobody's going in.
But if you remember, and Mike is gonna say that they paid us, right? Remember in 2000, when the state said, we will give you 73 cents on a dollar if you re, re, re-renovate the building? Remember, right? It was ten years, we got the letter, ten years later, says we're broke, we can't give you any money. And how much today is it? Three?
And there's no money now.
Three million? And the governor says, I don't have any more money for you? What do we do? I don't know, but what they say, they'll pay us $40,000 a month for a hundred years? That's why I don't
They pay us 40% construction times our aid ratio. As we make payments, they'll reimburse us. To date, we have received 3.3 million, $749,000 in payments on the cat, on the high school project.
Since?
Which we, on the high school project since
2002.
Uh, oh, uh, that's the '03 issue. That started with the '03 issue, okay? And, you know, so $3,749,000 is received back from the state as reimbursement on payments of $13,006,000.
Say, say, tell me that one more time. That, tell me that one more, on payments of how much?
We've paid $13,006,000 in debt service on the '03, '05, and the
$13 million, okay.
And we received back $3,749,000 on the state share.
And what does the state owe us now? At this point?
Thirty-five percent of what we still owe on this debt. Roughly, they're paying, they're reimbursing us 35 percent, 35 cents on the dollar.
Okay, but 35 cents on the dollar, it was supposed to be 72, 73. Okay, you weren't here, Phil wasn't there, but I, I think Mr. York was here when we got the letter from the governor. Corbett has said we're broke, there's nothing we can do about it. So, you know, they stuck, so I'm, I'm a little leery about having the state do anything for us.
They're not for you, they just told Union Town, no. You started the, no, there is not, you're not giving anything.
So again, Mr. Harvey, that's why they do have all these options. And I understand them, uh, but we have to get the best for our dollars and we don't have very many dollars. Uh, but our kids do deserve
Rocky, we first started out, it was, uh, building a new school and there was nothing to do with it, Phil. He said, we get that down the road. So why don't we build a new school and worry about the stadium and
I'm all for it, uh, we have ninety acres here, forty-one at Redstone Middle School.
We need a building.
Well
I, I agree.
You can't raise taxes.
No, I know that, but we
No way possible that you can sit here and say, I'm gonna raise taxes. No way possible.
It's not gonna happen.
Say, say, I need a new building and you got a teacher's contract out here. You got an Act 93 that nobody will let us get into because I want to go to a complete
But can you build one elementary complex for $12 million?
Come on, Rocky, we can't do, I mean, how do you do it?
Can you build one elementary complex for $12 million?
No, you can't. We don't
No.
Right here, right here out front of the building.
No.
What you can, the closest you can get to that is Hiller here, K two, and Cox Donahue three, and five. Now, it's not the best situation. It does centrally locate the schools. You do get a certain degree of operational savings, which, may I add, I think everybody agrees that that's the key to this. You talk about teachers' contracts, talk about the finances, and talk about not being able to repair what we have. It's because our operational costs are such that we're just getting by. If we get ourselves to a situation where we can lower our operational costs and we have a long-term savings that we now apply to teachers' contracts, to maintenance, to hiring more people to do maintenance, that, that is the key.
John, we got, we had roofs leaking, this building was under, uh, warranty. When the roofs are leaking, it was under warranty, where, why did we go after it? You have a building back here that was smashed with the car. I know we got a check for it to fix it. Where's that money? Rocky, where's the money?
Unlike some school districts, Brownsville School District is in the black.
Well, I just want to know where that money is.
We're not $7 million in red, we're not $40 million in red like some districts.
Because that's why the whole building
Buy very little, buy very little.
If
Your nine board members put constraints on things, and that has made a difference in the past two years.
Right, so we are in very good position to reap operational costs and we can lower our operational savings and we can lower our operational costs.
But if we could refinance the bond, then it would be $18 million, that certainly would solve all the problems.
Yes.
So
And we started this pro, project right here, Rocky, you know the $16 million, it ended up
I, I, I'm just, yeah.
With change orders. John guaranteed us Monday night that the fixed rate of $12 million, that we don't have to deal with change orders and this and that. I wanna hear that from the architect. Because the architect is nobody but his designer and all, you have to go to contractors. They're gonna guarantee us if there's a change order, we don't have to address it.
It, it is a no-brainer if this project could be completed with no increase to the taxpayers. Because you're floating a bond, right, for forty years, just like they floated one for all schools for fifty years ago. You're still, we're just paid off Cox Donahay ten years ago, for forty years. So, we'll all be dead.
Yeah.
Go have a high school. Hate to put it that way. It's like, that's not strapping the taxpayers. Okay, because you're gonna pay the same bond payment, correct, Mike? With this project, we're gonna make the same payment.
For this scenario, yes, same.
Right.
Same bond payment, we just are a little short on the cash.
If you have nine million for Hiller and three million for Cox, there's nobody there for a state. So you got buildings, which is okay. But we get, we need a building, we need some kind of building, we need something. Because Central's in terrible shape, we've had, we had problems over the other day.
But I'm saying if you put K to two, K to two, up at Cox, you're doing less renovations because you're doing rooms there for small children. Up at Hiller, you only have one room at kindergarten. So why would we then wanna go up here with K one, two? Why would we want them at Hiller, not put them at that school where you don't have that much renovation, that much renovation?
Mr. Law, when we, we can do that. My basis for bringing that, for proposing that to the board and doing it in that phased approach again was to try and eliminate any construction around our students. If we wanna, if we, or we think we're comfortable that all these renovations can occur over the summer at Cox Donahay, which I, I don't believe that's the case, then we're gonna be in a situation where we're trying to do renovations with students and teachers in the building.
Here's, you're right, John, the dilemma is this. When we close Cardell, when we close Cardell and Cox, we got the study on those schools. Cardell was here, we closed, Central was right just above, structurally sound, okay? So we closed Cardell because.
You see those inch cracks in the walls?
Well, I understand, Central was in no, I mean, our people try to keep it the best condition they can. If we've got problems, we've got electrical problems, we've got roof problems, we've got problems. Nobody's gonna rent a bank and go build a new school, I agree. But their point is, they're fifty years old. Someone, not me, maybe some board sitting here in the future is gonna be in deep crap. The safety of those children is certainly the most important.
Based on that, my recommendation is that we vote on items B and C. Now, we, we can try, we can decide whether we wanna keep Cox Donahay, K to two, and, and, and Hiller three to five. But in lieu of the brand-new building, which I still feel is the best situation, I think this is the next one.
And I don't disagree, John, item B, where it says new state.
Not, not this item B, I'm talking about voting on item D and C on our motions, which would be option A up here.
Is there any way you can refinance that bond and give more money than twelve million?
No.
You'd have to issue new money. And I don't believe.
What's our current bond?
What is our current bond payment?
Five hundred and thirty-five thousand, six hundred dollars a year.
About a year.
Five hundred and thirty-five.
Five hundred and thirty-five.
Five hundred and thirty-five. And remember, Mr. President, like you said, we are operating in the black.
Fairly.
Fairly, but my point being, if we renovate Hiller and Cox Donahay, yes, there's no money left to build a new stadium, but the proceeds that we get from the sale of our properties, we can put to upgrading our current facility and then perhaps because of the operational costs that we, we, that occur over the course of the next five years, then in five years, we're in a situation to build a new stadium.
Well, down on Redstone, down on the fifty-yard line, we have a gas well down there, we probably can pay for all of this, but we gotta close it down and start drilling it. Phil, you're aware of that. Come on, it's a big one. And we're sitting here and our kids, they have nothing to be proud of, nothing.
Well.
Nothing, nothing.
You have a beautiful school right here.
These kids don't walk the floor, they go play on that.
I'm proud of what we've done, it's been ten years, we've made mistakes.
We've had people sue us, they fell through the bleachers, the boards are all rotting, there's rats under the bleachers, that's nice.
It needs work, there's no question it needs work.
And I'm not saying it doesn't need work, and trust me, I.
How much did you donate to school now?
A billion dollars that we put in at Stadium Outlets and we could have had.
But how much did you just darn overputting down there just what, two years ago?
I don't know, I wish everybody would go around the schools, just in this area, and go look at all their football fields and middle yards and see how, how, how they are.
I understand that, and believe me, Mr. Bain, I played football here, played baseball here. And I'm as much for that as anybody, but I can't forego or put that ahead of what our children and.
Education.
You know, I'm all about education, you know? And, and education starts right here in the classroom, okay? Our scores in this school district are deplorable. Nobody can tell me any difference, I've been tracking scores for many years. Okay, um, can we, can we do some changes? I wish the state would just get rid of their No Child Left Behind and let our teachers have their classroom back, I bet the scores would come up a little better. Uh, but right now, our, our scores ain't that good. And our kids go to places, and I say we want, our kids travel. I've been around them in sports, and our kids travel, and they go in shame. Okay, we should not be ashamed.
But to that point.
Bricks and mortar waiting, John, bricks and mortar, it's not educated.
I was speaking just a moment ago, I was speaking. We just, somebody just said, listen, somebody just said about pride and, and a sense of pride in a football stadium. What do you think that these kids have a sense of pride in the schools that they're in? That's the majority of our students versus putting them on a football stadium that looks nice, it's putting them in schools that look nice.
But you're missing an issue, he said that, he said about our scores, and I said, bricks, wait, I'm talking. Bricks and mortar, they're educated kids.
I understand.
Okay, drop, right there, right there.
Neither does the new football stadium.
No, no, it doesn't.
Okay, many things.
Monday night, it was no issue, Monday night, oh, we could do it.
We need a building first, okay?
Right.
You know that.
We can do it, that's what he talked, he talked.
Athletics will fall in line, they'll fall in line. I mean, somewhere if you get twelve million, you can.
You do, you do. Yes, you do, you changed everything.
What?
You're private meeting.
What? Go ahead, somebody make a comment. I'm just saying, guys, you know, we're, we're elected by the people to make decisions, and they've been tough. I mean, we've got our ears beat many times in the last year.
Put a referendum in for November, see if the taxpayers out here want a twenty-million-dollar building, see.
But you can't do that, because.
Why not? Try, honey, try.
You're not gonna tax them anyway.
And then you go, no.
Of course, that's why I asked, can we afford the twelve, twelve million?
You know they can.
Bond financing, so we're not going to add any more taxpayers any more grief, I certainly won't vote for that. But somewhere along the line.
That's why I'm recommending.
This board, the next board, somebody gotta do something with these two buildings.
We need to do it now, and I'm recommending the renovation of Hiller, renovation of Cox Donahay, and the proceeds we get from sale of our properties to upgrade our football field.
I so much wanna go with that, John, I so much.
That's twelve million dollars or less. And without a tax increase, that's doing everything that, that you just talked about.
But don't, don't, you look at that as a bad idea.
Absolutely, I agree with you. I, I agree. But this board voted down.
Knock it out, get Phil down there, let him go play football at another school, and let's get that gas well. And we'll pay for teacher's salaries, administrator's salaries.
I'd like to see that studied or.
That's true.
So that.
Okay, I, I wish that was.
Close that down. Close it down.
I was on the board when, when Chevron said that the largest gas well that they could get in Bay County was on the fifty-yard line.
It is. And we would have to be sitting here crying, oh, where are we gonna find that dog, this dog?
I don't know if that's gonna be another one. Does this board disagree, and I'm talking to all of you, does, does this board disagree that the best idea is a new complex? Here, right out, right here, altogether.
Absolutely.
Well, that is, Rocky, that is.
I, I understand.
Well, it is.
But yes, if we, take a step back.
All they want, but there's people here that can't pay for it, Rocky.
I'm, I'm saying that in the same, same breath, I'm not for taking money and gouging the taxpayers. I'm saying, we all are agreeing that the ideal situation would be to have an elementary complex somewhere.
Oh, yes, we said that, well, I said that five and a half years ago.
A, a field house and all that, as you go to other schools. I mean, we're not other schools, but we have a good school system here. I, I, I've been on here sixteen years, and it's been tough, but we have good people, we have, this is a good town. Yeah, if you drive through it, it ain't the best, but we, but we have good people.
And the ideal thing would be here.
It would be ideal, and Rocky, we agree this.
Brownsville, Redstone thing, because I'm from Redstone, but I'll, I'll vote right now for that there right here.
We agreed that with that five years ago, we're still sitting here doing nothing. I said, send the seven million back at that time, and let's get interest on. Oh, we can't do that, no, you can't do, find out later. Yes, we could have done it, we didn't get a penny interest.
But we were guided the wrong way.
Because nobody would make a decision.
We were guided the wrong way, that's not your fault, that's not this board's fault, because people.
What do I do, what do you do? That's why I'm skeptical of everybody.
Well, I, I am too, I'm skeptical, but don't you feel that there's a need for us to move forward somewhat?
Oh, I wanna move forward, I just said, let's go.
I agree with moving forward, but you know, every time you say new complex, and the people here are clapping their hands, are the ones that are well-employed in this district, okay? Okay, and I do not see out here our senior citizens that are pounding at me, we can't afford another tax increase. So, we do, they still come out to vote, they may not come to the court, but they will be out at the polls in November. So we do have to consider that.
And they pay the bills.
And it should be put on a referendum for raises, for everything. The people should vote, nine members shouldn't vote for the superintendent?
That's what we have as school boards, school boards are very powerful, that's what you're elected to do, to make these tough decisions. That's what the people put you, us, in here for. Like it or not, you get on the street, you get your ear beat, that's what he.
But hey, Rocky, you can only go to the well, so.
Well, the well is it what it is.
It's dry, you have no.
All of us here, all of us here that sat here in the last two years made some very difficult conversations.
Look at your brother.
But we brought them back. So, right now, we're in the same situation, uh, so we can decide about what we wanna do. Does it have to be done tonight?
Well, I'm so confused right now, I don't wanna do anything, I'm afraid. You people actually, by the way you were talking, you actually frightened me.
Me?
People frightened me, because there's something wrong here, believe me.
Well, we are elected.
Five and a half years.
But if you remember, Mrs. Law, whatever, we, we did these renovations, we started in nineteen ninety-five, they didn't do dirt till two thousand and one. It takes time, so we've been at this for a long time.
But for five and a half years and you couldn't make one decision?
But if we don't make some kind of move with Central's school building, or we don't try to make some kind of move with Central, either fix it, move, build, renovate something, uh, it's gonna, it's gonna be in our lap.
So, let me, Mr. Harvey.
These buildings are gonna start falling down soon.
Behind you, Mr. Harvey, yes. Is that, is that like working towards a complex right there?
Yes, I, I think Plan C.
Forehead. Well, I don't, I don't look at A being complex, I'm a C, you can see that you're only one grade short.
Now, now, again, if you look at A, you, you do the renovations in Hiller, and you have the room there, you do that now. Again, in five, seven years, you may be able to do another addition in the Hiller to make that the one school. Now you have a school here.
Well, with nine million dollars, how many, would that be enough classrooms?
Yes, at Cox Donahay. For nine?
If we, we look at C there, would that, is that gonna screw really?
Just one through five.
Yes, one through five.
Just one through five.
We don't have one school, and, and Hiller would be a kindergarten.
Yeah, I put your straight.
Well, if you don't, why would you put nine million dollars into Cox Donahay if you're saying in five years, maybe we have a complex up here, or you would have, do it in Hiller? Why would you sink, sink nine million into Cox Donahay?
I agree with you, Mr. Harvey.
Sink it into Hiller. Sink it into Hiller, you essentially have a new building there, in five years you add on to it again, and then now you have the one school.
I, I don't see how in five years we're gonna have enough money for a complex if we spent this twelve million now.
I don't either.
But this twelve million.
I don't either.
We have, I mean, we need to do something, you see what I'm saying?
But in five years, you're gonna have to start another bond.
We can, we can borrow again, we'll be in a position to borrow without a tax increase because of our cost.
Well.
Because of our operational savings.
We don't do nothing and the roof falls in on a whole classroom of kids, our law students will wipe everything out.
Exactly.
We gotta do something.
Mike, what's our, what's our projected cost, say, in proposing Cardell last year?
Uh, where were they? Like, like this, nine, nine hundred thousand? Because, you know, we, you had, you had personnel involved there, solidity, teachers, you're not gonna have that now.
I would imagine what Cardell projected, you're projecting around nine hundred thousand.
It seems like nine hundred and eighty-seven thousand.
Something like that, because, because of, you know, the classrooms. Can you give us a projection of what it would be if our complex, the savings on that? And there will be no savings with those options, correct?
A projection on a new complex?
Yes, what it would be.
Dr. Baris, you have a glass eyes.
Yes, I understand, but I'm talking, I'm talking about maintenance, gear, wars, everything included, you know?
And with that, I would like to know the value of the forty-one acres of Redstone.
Yes, and the gas well, we need to know this, because we need, if that's, that's the case, we need to make a move quick.
And just for the sake of asking, Chevron or Rabin, if they would. See what they wanna do with that gas well. I mean, these are costs, I mean, these are things that could add to revenue.
Definitely.
Just not to change the subject, but the Cardell, is it because the judge has not authorized the sale, or the, the realtor has not?
Realtor's been there, um, he, he's been through the building, he's supposed to put the signs up.
What we need, what we need is a consensus, um, of the value that you want listed at. Okay?
He's recommending.
He's recommending two hundred thousand as a list price. You don't need to vote on that, just.
No, you did not. The only thing you did was allow us to go to a Realtor, you voted on a Realtor, he came back to us. No, no, he came back to us with this estimate, now at this meeting, he's asking for, he's recommending two hundred thousand dollars.
We, one of the things, we need to expedite that because it's getting to be winter. That building's susceptible to whatever, you know, you'll wake up one day and the windows will be gone, whatever's in there is gone, somebody took over whatever.
We, we only need the judge, uh, Mr. Harvey, is when it is sold.
So, I'm sorry?
The only time the judge comes into play is when there's an agreement to sell.
So we can expedite?
No, just a consensus.
Will you contact?
Just a consensus for two hundred thousand.
Do we have that consensus?
Yes.
So would you contact Mr. French to expedite this?
Yes.
Sell, I mean, we just need to close this building and not board it up, we need to have it sold. Uh, it's not going to us any good, and it's revenue. The board agree?
Yes.
Because if it sets over winter, Mr. Harvey will be down there with plywood and he'll be breaking in and taking everything.
I would make a motion to put that in a building account, not general funds that it gets the door in.
You can do that when it is sold.
Okay.
Yes. And, and that goes back to the point, it should go back into this point, to the additional resources.
And I do wanna know where you can charge check when this building out here that was crashed with the vehicle wasn't fixed. I wanna know how much the check was worth, that's four times now, and where the money is. Because it's never been addressed, never.
That was when the previous.
We still have money in the general fund, correct?
I don't know when it was now.
No. I still have a recommendation that, I understand, Mr. Assis, you wanna find out about the wealth and everything, but I still recommend that we, we move on these motions, because obviously, if we find out something on that, we, we can change our minds, we can do something different.
Well, I'm saying if we, if it's what Mrs. Law was claiming, I mean, then we could change our plans for.
Absolutely, but I, I think right now, we move with option or motions B and C, which is option A. One of the things that was explained, Mr. Harvey touched on twice.
Yeah, I don't think we can move anywhere.
If, if you do move forward on this bid, there's two ways to bid it. One is timing material, and that's when change orders are involved. The other way is a fixed price, and if they say X amount of dollars, they've got a building with X, there's no coming back to you. So you can tell them no, you, that's the design, that's what you want, you have to do it, so there's two ways. The fixed price could be a little bit higher, because they've gotta do more work and.
They're gonna cover themselves.
Cover themselves and sharpen their fence and make sure that everything's covered and they don't, you know, but. And you may have less people bid on it for fear of that risk. That's why most of your building projects are done T and M, because you can get more contractors to bid on it, they'll come in lower, because all the risk falls back onto the school, because you're paying T and M.
Whereas you go out and bid at its fixed price, you hold the contractor count. Now you'll get less contractors to bid on it. You'll get a higher price. But we already know what the price we want to pay. So if we lock it in, that's.
I, I have a question. If we vote on one of these motions, hypothetical, we then involve the architect, am I right? Then we have to start paying. We haven't paid up until this point, am I right?
We paid for previous service, but we're all paid up.
We're all paid up. So if we go ahead, if we go ahead and vote on one of these, that gives him the go-ahead. So then we got to start paying him. Then if you want to change, we got to pay him all over.
Well, there, there's a certain, no, it's, it, there's a certain range where, as they're developing the project, there, there's a certain range of.
Well, he's going to start developing.
Remember, in Jordan's law, he never even put plan call A in the Harrisburg, and they paid him three hundred seventy-five thousand.
Don't forget, they will, architects will sit with the board to get your input. They're not going to go out and design something and come back and say, how do you like it? You're going to tell them what you want.
They've gotten it before. We never had a problem.
Making this kindergarten yard up here.
They'll come up, they'll come up to you with a picture of a building, but you've got to tell them.
It's up to us, you know, to be completely engaged with that.
So our building, you made it a kindergarten.
And we can control that. We, it's up to this board to control that process. So again, my recommendation is to vote yes to the motions B and C.
I thought we moved the deal.
We can still.
If that's down there, if that's down there, why would we do this?
Because we can start initiating those actions. And again, it's minimal at the beginning. It's, it's still, we can start our discussions with the, with the architects. It's a design concept.
This is too, it's too iffy.
What if it doesn't come through the field? Then we're just X amount of time less where these students are in these, in these buildings that need something done. We're just delaying.
Well, we delayed it for five and a half years, which one month for her. On Monday night, I was all for this. But from Monday till today, everything sort of changed. I'm not here to pay any architect for them to start taking money out of our.
My, based, we had this discussion, we, we can't move the kids. If we can't.
Yes, that's a motion, second. Roll call please.
Uh, Mrs. Terabekia?
No.
Mrs. Kaminsky?
Pass.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Delroy?
Yes.
Mrs. Braward?
No.
Mr. Boucher?
Pass.
Mr. Bay?
No.
Mr. Assis?
No.
Mrs. Kaminsky?
I'm staying.
And Mr. Boucher?
I'll stay back.
The other motion before you must be tabled at this time.
I moved your table.
Motion, in a second, be tabled. All in favor? Not opposed.
I don't have, we can't.
No, we can't. I, I was going to make that motion. I moved the refinance to current series two thousand and five, all in demand or most beneficial to the Brownsville area school district. And to employ, this is based on your recommendation.
You used P and C in the past. The board is okay with that. Or no, bond council is Thor Breed, sorry. Thor Breed.
And to employ Thor Breed as the bond council to investigate and provide a recommendation for said finance.
Motion by Director Harvey, by Director Kaminsky. Questions? Roll call please.
Uh, Mr. Brass?
Yes.
Is Bay?
Yes.
Yes.
Is Braward?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaminsky?
Yes.
And Mr. Terabekia?
Yes.
One additional comment. This is a difficult decision and, and I appreciate everybody's, that this was actually good dialogue, constructive. I, I don't completely agree with the outcome. But this is the type of dialogue that we need to continue in buildings and grounds meetings, in future meetings. This is the type of discussion that needs to continue. It hasn't to this point, quite frankly. So I appreciate everybody's input. I appreciate everybody having constructive dialogue and being open to everybody's comments. And let, let's, please, continue this so that we can get somewhere. Like I said, it hasn't occurred up to this point.
You know, Mr. Harvey, I appreciate what you're saying. Yesterday, there was a director writing this very building. Well, you were on your conference call to Mr. Kimball. And I talked to you, you didn't even invite him on the call. I don't, I don't like that deal on one. I don't like it and I don't care for the architect and I don't think that's very good business when you're dealing with nine individuals, not one.
Understood.
You speak about the deal with nine people. And each person has a different view.
Absolutely.
At least you have the right to express it.
Absolutely. And that's why we have board meetings and that's, it's too difficult. It's too difficult to do business outside of board meetings with nine people. That's why you have chairpersons for personnel and athletics and, and buildings and grounds. So you go out and you solicit the information and you bring them back to this board.
Right. Well, why didn't you share what you talked about yesterday when he's not?
That's exactly what you have in front of you.
We talked about this Monday night. So you had to talk about some.
No, it changed. You asked why it changed from.
On that part about the kindergarten.
Or, and why I said, absolutely, I said Monday night that I thought Hiller could be renovated for seven, Hoxton Hall here for three, Levees two. Right. And based on the conversations we have with the architect and on their expert opinions, like, no, you can't do Hiller for seven. It's going to be nine. And that's why it changed. And that's the information I bring back to this.
Okay. Maybe we can find an architect that can do it for that. Because I know Albert Geller's got a school for twelve hundred elementary students for nine million and they got to buy the land.
Mike, give it up.
Yes, I will be contacting DNC and Thor Breed tomorrow to start the processing. I will tell them I'd like to try to get this done before the next board meeting. If not, we'll probably have to set a special meeting. You know, it may take six weeks instead of four to get this all together. Okay, I just want to let you know, so as soon as I find out something, when they'll be ready, I'll, I'll.
Okay.
Before we do public comment, I'd like to, the board and administration, what you think. Ms. Sarah Inks, Bob Hall, teachers up in the booth, and Carl Darrell Pennant, and Derek Evans for Manning the microphone. The new staff. I hope everybody is secure out there. Yeah, name as well. Item, item ten, public comments on non-agenda items. Anyone who wishes to speak, please come forward, state your name and page of business. Please come forward, please. That lady here first. Here's the microphone. In three minutes.
Okay. Hello, Melissa Deal, taxpayer parents. I just have a couple of questions. First, how many brand new classrooms would the Hiller addition renovation create? I guess you'd have to build on and not just run it.
Which one is that? Hiller?
It was the second.
Okay. And then, currently, we have, elementary-wise, what, about forty to forty-five classrooms in use? I was just kind of curious if we could get, say, ten or fifteen, however many you're willing to add. You know, just where we'd be, you know, if you did that addition and then five or ten years down the road, then you'd only need an additional fifteen or so as a second addition. So I was just curious what this Hiller project might create.
Do you have that impression?
Well, it would be.
Eight, eight classrooms.
There's eight currently, it'll be an addition. Thirteen.
Thirteen, so that would take that going to twenty-one.
Correct.
It's about what Central has now, is that correct? Okay. And my only other comments are, I'll put, you know, classroom buildings are so much more important than sports facilities. So I just respectfully ask you that you please focus on those classrooms only right now until we can afford and use the building sale revenues to put it into football fields and other things. But please just focus on our classroom for our kids. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, for the revenue.
Okay. Melanie Schumar. I respect everyone. I've heard everything that you guys said and I mean no disrespect. And if I may quote Mr. Boucher, I think you will have a lot in your lap if you do not do something. Central, there are four hundred and twenty kids. My son is a Stradis student and he was proud to get to Brownsville. And I was proud for him to go to Brownsville. Although I didn't go there, I was proud for him to get there. And I am slowly losing that pride. He, and I give all the credit, I give a hundred percent credit to Mrs. Goody and to the teachers. Half of them, which I do not know, who are as kind as they can be. To me, my son right now has a broken leg, so I have to take him every day to school. I don't know any of these teachers. They are all kind. They have accommodated him greatly. However, there are four hundred and twenty kids at Central. And if you don't understand what that means, I, I really wish that each one of you could go there and just spend one day. Because you would understand that it's a mess. Not to mention that the ceiling fell in the fifth grade room, which I'm sure you're all aware of. And they're all boggling and the school, it's in horrible shape. And, and as, as she said, I hope you don't focus on football fields until you can get our kids a safe, nice environment that they will have school pride. Because I want my son to be a Stradis student. I want him to go to college and I want him to learn and he is losing all of that. That incentive to do that. It's just more of a hassle. There are too many kids. He can't get through the hallway. It's crowded. Lunch is crowded. Recess is crowded. He doesn't like recess. Everything's crowded. It's, it's just, it's a constant battle.
And it's a very tough time.
And, and the teachers.
Mrs. Schumar, we went, we, we closed this Cardell school on the recommendation of the building principals and the superintendent who told us there was ample room. No board member here, I don't think, voted to.
There's not.
Children in a children's, out of punctuation. They, they assured us that it would not be that way.
Right. But it is.
I, I understand.
It is. It is that way. And, and for four hundred and twenty kids to be there and to try to, to teach, and they are. I, I commend the teachers greatly because they are teaching. And the homework's coming home and he, and he has a steady agenda, if you will, of, of, in the midst of chaos. It's chaos.
See, I don't, I don't understand that in a way because let me tell you why. You know, we have class size and our teachers are contracted.
Yes.
And they only teach a certain amount of students. So no matter what building they would be in, if those students are there and say they teach first grade, it would be twenty-five.
Right, correct.
Your son would still be in that situation.
Exactly, exactly. For example, the cafeteria, I'm not sure if you know how big that is at Central?
I do.
Well, the lunches are staggered because there are four hundred and twenty children.
I understand that.
That you cannot fit in that cafeteria. You can't. You just can't do that.
Well, I mean, we're going by what the state says we can do. It's minimal, it's very tight. We knew it was going to be tight.
Right. I understand. I understand it is tight. And, and, and I think everyone is doing the best that they can with what they have, is my point. And, and I, and I understand. And Mrs. Goody is, is absolutely wonderful. I, I didn't know her before this year and I think she's doing a wonderful job. I think the teachers are doing a wonderful job. But it is literally falling apart around the children while they're in there.
Swallowing, figuring this out.
You know, and, and I don't want them not to have school pride. Because these are, you know, your leaders of the future.
There's, there's only one other comment I could add. In the year two thousand and one, when we did the renovations, up here, was major disruption with kids. It was, but it worked out in the end, everybody.
And well, and you know what? I went to California High School and we did the same thing. I was in school while they were renovating. And it was awful. It was awful with drugs, plastic hanging everywhere.
And I think our goal was to look around that. We, we renovate, that's what we have to do, we have to. We build new and certainly there's no disruption on, on new schools.
Right. And, and I, I think whatever decision, I know it's a very hard decision for all of you to make. But as a parent, I, I, I don't want to see my son's friends and, and the kids that he's been with since kindergarten, since preschool.
You come here to see this, to see what we're trying to do. Because it's forwarded for two years now. We have been back and forth, out. This, just to try to come to the best for the taxpayers, the people who pay the bills and the kids. And this is something that, this is a major decision.
You know, Brown.
To the point now with the buildings are, they're not in the best.
Right. And Brownsville always gets a bad rap, whether it be in the newspaper, whether it be in anything. And I always was, and, and I, I tried to stick up, no, Brownsville is not that.
Kids, when they go to class, when they go somewhere, maybe not here, but when they go somewhere, they win awards.
Right. And, and I, I agree with that.
They win awards.
I feel that, not only because it's a change, and it is a change for all the kids and they're still young. They're at a new school, they're with new kids. But on top of that, you have it falling apart. And I don't know how you can expect them to have school pride and, and wanting to school and be excited to learn when, you know.
We're working to that. I like it.
It's crap. And, and that's really the only word I can use, and it is. But, and I know it's a hard job for you, but I do want to say that the teachers are wonderful. Mrs. Goody is wonderful and they're dealing with what they have. And I hope the kids don't lose that school pride. You know, and could hold off.
Thank you.
Thank, I'm glad.
Since the start of school, I have walked every hallway in every school. I see no signs of overcrowding. I don't know where the overcrowding is coming from. Do we have any over, five classrooms, doctor?
Class size, it's class size.
Right. You're not going to have it.
Okay, look, we're not, we're not over on anything. Okay, I walk the halls, I don't see, I, I mean, I've watched, I've listened to the bell rings, I've watched the kids walk. You know, it's no different than when it was when I went to school. I don't see overcrowding. I, what I do see is these kids, last year were used to maybe not near as many kids in the, in the hall because we were spread out a little bit. But it's not, it's not an overcrowding, it's overwhelming. And to sit there and observe and watch our teachers and how involved our teachers are in them transferring with these kids and everything else. I want to tell you what, our teachers, it's not just a classroom. Our teachers are working in the halls, they're working in the cafeterias. I mean, they're trying everything to keep everything order. And I want to tell you, to watch it actually go in a day's work and just stand there and stand back and watch it. I mean, it's not as bad as the picture I, that people bring to me. And the best way I can get a picture is not by comment, it's actually to go there and visit. And I've been to every school and watched our teachers and watched our administration and watched how our kids move in the cla, in, in the halls. And I'm, I think we're doing a pretty darn good job. I'm, I'm really proud of the way the movement goes. I am not proud of ceilings coming down. I am not proud of gutters falling off the roofs. I mean, we've really got to do something. I understand that. And like I said, none of this money will mean anything if we get a roof to fall on a classroom. We're, we're really trying to get a good decision for the taxpayers so we can give them something sound and structural for our kids to have a good classroom and our teachers to have a, a good environment to teach these children. We are striving. We are striving, we, we don't, we're just don't sit here and just look pretty, I mean, we're actually trying to figure something out. We may have differences of opinions, but we are trying to bring it to one. So, I just don't see the overcrow, I do see it busier than last year, but I don't see overcrow.
Someone.
Tara Childs, Brownsville, Kansas City, um, I do wanna reenter what Melanie said, it is crowded, the recess is crowded, I've spoken with the teachers, they've told us that they can't even keep an eye on all of the kids. You have, in fifth grade, you have twenty-nine kids in a room, and next year, the fourth grade that's gonna be in fifth grade is even larger, so if you don't get this problem fixed this year, what are you gonna do? There's only five, I think there's six of, every other class, and fifth grade, they only had five classrooms because they had a double room, and there's twenty-nine kids in those classrooms. So, I think somehow you guys have to make a decision sooner than later.
It's funny you say that, Tara Childs, when I went to school, there was thirty-five in my classroom, and my teacher helped me put my coat on, he helped me get my books, walked me out to get in line for the bus, uh, we're not talking numbers like that. I mean, our teachers were involved with us to help us get our coats on.
The teachers are doing good, I'm just saying.
And I'm telling you, I see these teachers doing the same thing.
Teachers are doing great, and Mrs. Goody is doing great, too, like, the, the whole building, it, it, just like Melanie said, it is crowded, it's very crowded.
Well, it's crowded because we've been working with such low conditions for a while, and now, now we got a little bit of restraints on us. But we're well within all the legal limits. I mean, we're not, we're not sitting here on the teeter-edge saying, one more kid, we're gonna have to add a whole new.
No, but I don't think anybody would agree that they would like to have twenty-nine kids in there, you know, the, the reason there's so many kids in that classroom.
Kids all day, too.
The reason there's so many in that is because they ran out of room, and there was supposed to be room for everybody in the beginning.
Well, we're assured that we don't have any.
We didn't get rid of any teachers, we didn't get rid of any teachers, and no matter what school.
Yes, you did.
One, right, how many? Okay, but no matter what school your child would be in, you, you would still be in a room of twenty-nine.
No, because they're short of fifth grade, they're short of classroom, every other classroom has, what, six, right? And fifth grade only has five, because they ran out of room at Central, they didn't have enough to accommodate. Fifth grade is the only one that has twenty-nine kids.
First grade, if I can see, first grade only has five as well, we had to go by class size, and we were asked by board members to go with the most, fifth grade is the largest elementary class size, at twenty-nine, so the numbers that you had, that's why you ended up with five. First grade is the same way, which is why kindergarten, you have eight, because the class size is only twenty. It wasn't because you ran out of room, it was because of fifth class size. So, just when you speak to that.
Okay. But, and again, this classroom, I think, that's in fourth grade this year is even larger, so what are we gonna do next year, whenever you have?
Well, you adjust accordingly, you're gonna have to adjust accordingly.
Thank you. Anyone else, uh, someone, is there anyone else? No. Uh, one more, okay, motion by Director Terabekia, adjourned, second by, Mr. Kaminsky, all in favor? Aye, opposed?